Good morning. I will now call to order the September 29, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. First, our staff supports today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick; County Council Assistant Counsel, Jeff Muns; Commissioners Savis and Schrader are out of the office today. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. For those who have joined us this morning for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors meeting, we will be rescheduling that meeting to a future date before our winter recess in December so that all of the commissioners can be present. We apologize for any miscommunication. We will address two items on the consent agenda for the district but will not be handling any of the other district business at this meeting. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board. Gary.
Thank you, Chair. We're now meeting, you're now meeting as a Housing Authority Board of Clackamas County. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra. Ann, are you here?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Ann. This is a Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda, two items. Item one, approval of an exclusive negotiation agreement with Related Northwest for the redevelopment of Hillside Park. And Board Order 1972, delegating limited authority to the Executive Director to approve and sign time extensions provided for in the agreement. Fiscal impact is up to $100,000 if no disposition and development agreement is executed. Funding is through Metro Affordable Housing Bond Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, approval of assignment addendums to contracts with Clackamas Women's Services, Impact Northwest, Northwest Family Services, El Programa Hispano Catolico, and Greater New Hope Family Services transferring to Clackamas County. Assignment has no fiscal impact. Combined contract value remains at $2,984,012. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Bond Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ann, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
The motion has been moved by Commissioner Ann Leenstra. Do I have a second? Second. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and convene as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Housing Commissioner Leenstra. You may go. You're now meeting as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. This is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, two items. Item one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement to donate district-owned parcels of Mount Talbert Nature Park to Metro. Fiscal impact is $100,000 for closing costs. Correction, fiscal impact is $1,000 for closing costs. Funding is through district property tax assessments. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, ratification and affirmation as the Board of Directors of five contracts with various vendors previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners. No fiscal impact. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the, let me find my place here. I move to approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher? Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
Thank you, Chair. You're now meeting as a Water Environment Services Board, and this is the Water Environment Services Board Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, one item, approval of a joint funding agreement with the Northwest Geological Survey for Tuallaton River Water Quality and Flow Monitoring. Agreement value is $51,080 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund and the U.S. Geological Survey. No County General Funds are involved.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Service Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
You are now meeting as Board of County Commissioners, and this is the regular county consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Disaster Management, item one, approval of amendment increasing funding and extending duration of a sub-recipient agreement with the City of Portland for the 2021 Urban Area Security Initiative. Amendment value is $237,660. Agreement value is now $601,875. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. No County General Funds are involved. Transportation and Development, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Oregon Department of Transportation for use of the Baldock Maintenance Yard to stockpile materials for projects. No fiscal impact. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Happy Valley for the Oregon Highway 212-224 intersection, Rock Creek Interchange Improvement Project Study. Agreement value is $40,000. Funding is through the City of Happy Valley and the County Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Item three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Portland for the Colbert Replacement on 162nd Avenue conveying Mitchell Creek. Agreement value is $10,000. Funding through City of Portland and County Road Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services, item one, approval of an amendment increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for Project Hope. Amendment value is $4,991. Agreement value is increased to $36,081. Funding through the University of Baltimore Combating Opioid Overdose Through Community Level Initiative Grant. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment reducing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with Tuallaton Valley Fire and Rescue for Project Hope. Amendment reduces value of agreement by $19,000. Agreement value is now $16,490. Funding through the University of Baltimore Combating Opioid Overdose Through Community Level Initiative Grant. No County General Funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment extending the duration and modifying budgeting of a research subaward agreement with the University of Baltimore for the Combating Overdose Through Community Level Intervention Initiative Grant. Amendment has no fiscal impact. Grant value remains at $233,457. Funding is through the University of Baltimore. No County General Funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for COVID-19 Vaccination Operations. Amendment value is $600,000. Agreement value is now $3,400,000. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Item five, approval of an amendment increasing funding extending the duration and modifying the scope of work of an agreement with Ride Connection Incorporated to provide transportation services for residents of Clackamas County who are 60 years or older or have a disability through the Transportation Reaching People Program. Amendment value is $149,006 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $212,601 for three years. Funding is through Oregon Special Transportation Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item six, approval of an amendment increasing funding extending the duration and modifying scope of work of an agreement with Ride Connection Incorporated to provide mileage reimbursement for volunteer drivers with the Transportation Reaching People Program. Amendment value is $32,747 for one year. Agreement value is $95,654 for three years. Funding is through Oregon Special Transportation Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item seven, approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Cascadia Health for Assertive Community Treatment Program Services. Grant value is $104,081.46 for 21 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Item eight, approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Cascadia Health for Residential Treatment Services. Grant value is $108,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Item nine, approval of a motel hotel services contract with Durgash LLC doing business as Econo Lodge Southeast for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants. Contract value is $779,400 for nine months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds and County American Rescue Plan Act Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item 10, approval of assignment addendums for contracts with women, Clackamas Women's Services, Impact Northwest, Northwest Family Services, El Programa Hispano Catolico, and Greater New Hope Family Services transferring from the Housing Authority. Assignment has no fiscal impact. Combined contract value remains at $2984,012. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item 11, approval of an amendment extending duration of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for the Improved Criminal Justice Response for Domestic Violence Program. Amendment extends duration by one month. Grant value remains at $260,542. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Justice. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Very good. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Fisher has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Thank you very much. Next is public communication. Boy, we sure ripping through this fast. "This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them today due to time constraints." I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first, and I have several cards, and I believe I'm going to try to go into order as they were presented. Up first, Les Poole, please come forward. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Les Poole, I've lived in the county for 30 years, which is hard to believe. My son is over 30, and that makes me over 40. Couple of subjects today. One of them is tolling. And as folks know, there's work going on on the bridge right now at Oregon City, and tolling has become, as I expected, a campaign issue. And I want to clarify that tolling is currently approved by the Federal Transportation Administration if we're going to increase capacity. In the case of the bridge, they're adding two lanes. In theory, you could toll those lanes, pay for that, and at the end of paying off that work, the tolls would be eliminated. What ODOT is planning for us, of course, is a far different scenario. And that is, as I've stated and others are learning, the plan to charge tolls on existing highways. They have a two-year test plan. They've got an approval for it because it's currently not authorized. But at the end of a two-year test, the ability to charge us to use existing lanes, charge a higher toll as traffic increases will be on their plan for future permanent approval. The other aspect of what they're attempting to do is put the money into a fund for use other than on the highways. It's an ill-advised plan. It's an abuse of what tolling has been used for in the past. And I would ask folks to look for the petition that's coming out in its second phase. If the petition, the statewide initiative qualifies for the 2024 ballot, it would require a public vote before the, as I like to call it, tolling scheme becomes permanent. My other subject briefly is, I've got some concerns about the plan to possibly purchase hotels, motels in the county for homeless housing. I see here there was an approval in the consent agenda for $800,000 for housing folks in the Econo Lodge. I realize we've got problems, we've got homeless, and we need to address them, but I'm really not convinced that taking property off the tax rolls, that taking motels and purchasing them and converting them is something that's going to be an affordable option. The money to purchase these hotels and motels came from a state fund, and by all means, it looks very tempting to the county. The taxpayers will pay for this. Initially, it won't have a cost, but I think there's a lot of issues that are not being addressed here. So let's think twice before we buy any of these motels in Clackamas County and take them off of the tax rolls. Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments are very well taken. I think probably most of us agree with you. Also, the consent agenda item that was about $779,000 for the Econo Lodge, that is for shelter only, to be used at a later date, and we have some winter weather coming up. And so that won't be spent until they actually take in people. But thank you for bringing that up. Next up is Bonnie Hayman. Please come forward. Introduce yourself and your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff.
The microphone forward so we can hear you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I'm Bonnie Hayman. I've had the good fortune to live in Welch's for 11 years. The Hoodland area property that we're considering would be a great asset for Hoodland Fire. Currently, the Hoodland Fire Staff is housed for their 24/7 service in a trailer behind the building where there are no restrooms. So during the winter, they have to trudge through a block or so of snow to get to a restroom. I think we can do better than this. So my hope is that you will consider giving the dormant property to the fire department so that they can locate a new fire station which will better serve our firefighters. The other thing that's also important would be that there is a thriving community garden on that property that could be preserved. That property, their excess food, all goes to the needy in the community, and I think that would be a very good use of that property. Thank you.
Bonnie, your ideas are very well taken. In fact, this board is going to be discussing this very issue in a week or two, and I really look forward to it. I like the ideas that you and others have brought forward. So we'll see what happens.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming forward today. Up next, Rick Dodge. Please state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Rick Dodge, Milwaukee.
We won't start until you get going here.
I'm so anxious, I'm choked up, and it's not in a good way. This hotel buying situation over here is, when I got the news, and I'm one of few that got the news in my neighborhood, and Comfort Suites is in a residential area, and that's my neighborhood. And we already have problems. Now, I'm a bit insulated from some of the problems. I'm on a dead-end street. We don't have traffic or foot traffic. You kind of know me a little bit. I go out and I talk to the people, and I talked to about 20 people because that's, since I got the news, it's about all the time I had. They are appalled, discouraged for several reasons. One, they didn't know about this. And what I learned was what's going on in the rest of the neighborhood that I'm insulated from. I couldn't believe some of the stories. The homeless are walking through our neighborhood, in people's yards, getting into recycling, fighting with the homeowners. And I'm so choked up, I can't. And I don't know why, you know, I know you get your information from the experts, but the experts don't listen to us half the time, or 99% of the time, excuse me. I was, and this, matter of fact, Comfort Suites, it's my understanding that they already have a level that they're already, somebody is subsidizing the homeless in that, and certainly not the neighborhood. Nevertheless, it's also my understanding that Oregon is way down the list in compared to the rest of the country for mental health services. That's where we need to put that money. Why are those people there? I've been down on my luck a couple of times in my life when I was a younger man, but I didn't have those problems. But they had the same resources that I, of course, we didn't. I wish I had more time, doggone it.
You know what? We have time today because it's only 10:30.
Okay, thank you.
So why don't you go ahead and just express yourself?
I'm trying.
Okay.
The neighborhood, they are, their biggest question is, how is that going to help the homeless? Because they're seeing this tri-county statewide situation not improving because the homeless are enabled to the point where they get to make the choice whether they get services help or not, and a big majority of them are not. And a couple of the people said, well, are these the only hotels in the Econo Lodge? I kind of knew about that some time ago. Nevertheless, they said, what about Martha's Vineyard, or, excuse me, Westland Lake Oswego? Or Tuallaton? Or Wilsonville? Have those areas? And bear with me, because these questions are critical. They're wondering also if, is this, is this a, is this going to be just for local homeless? Or is there going to be some collaboration with Multnomah County here? Because I'm kind of a news nut, as you can probably tell, and there was some talk of some collaboration between counties because of Metro. I could be wrong, whatever, but that is a question. Is this for, you know, local homeless only? Now, everybody's worried about their property values. When you sell your house, the very last line in a property disclosure, the question is, is there anything that a prospective buyer should know about that affects the property value, your property value? Legally, you have to answer yes or no. If you don't know, you're in the clear. If you do know, and all of a sudden, hey, you didn't tell me there was a homeless shelter up the street, you could get sued. There's a new development going over there on Johnson and Cypress, where the radio towers used to be. And my neighbors, who abut that property, got ahold of the developer, and they haven't heard back. And there's a Hartnell family over there, the Marvin &amp; Sons over there who own, you know, acreage, small acreage, that hasn't been developed yet. You know, is this a long-term thing? And I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Thanks, everybody, for doing this for me, with me. Lastly, it's, does this solve the problem? Why are they homeless? There's so many jobs out there, and so on and so forth. The homeless just don't seem to want any help. Now, I've been in contact with a lot of homeless since all this stuff happened years ago. And every one that I talked to, because I used to try to hire some when I needed some work done on some properties, every single one said no. Because I asked the question, where are you from? Well, we're from other states. I'm not going to mention whatever, but we're from other states. I said, well, why are you here? Because we can do anything we want to without any accountability. Measure 110 was a fricking magnet for people coming here from across the country. Measure 110 is the biggest failure. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Aren't you a real estate agent?
I was a real estate broker for 35 years.
So you know that. So I really appreciate the information that you brought forward today. In your conversations with the people whom you talk to, please have them notify us at clackamas.us. In your conversations with the people whom you talk to, please have them notify us at clackamas.us... What is it? BCC@clackamas.us, correct, and express their feelings. I'm going to let Commissioner Fisher address some of the issues that you brought up. This money is available through the Oregon Legislature. This county has tried to do the project turnkey before and did not find a willing seller in a neighborhood that wanted it, so we didn't do it. We considered a list of many properties, and it narrowed it down, and narrowed it down, and narrowed it down, because, well, some of them are too old. We're not going to buy an old property that won't be functional, number one. We don't even know if we're going to buy a new property. The Oregon Community Foundation will also go out and do due diligence, meaning they will go into the neighborhoods and get further information. And the initial information that went out that you were privy to was from county staff. I would imagine that nobody wants to have a facility in their neighborhood. However, we literally get screamed at for us to do something about the homeless population. We understand you need to have, identify the cause of the homeless. So in these facilities, I think this board is going to make a commitment, if we do it, that you have to treat the cause of the homelessness. Is it drug addiction? Is it mental illness? Is it loss of job? Is it domestic violence? And there's a whole host of identifiers out there. And then, we address, we get them into a hotel under a supervised treatment to have success for them to go forward. I understand what your people are saying very much, but I would like to hear from them how they want us to solve the homeless situation by just not saying no. If they want to say no, they can say no. I don't know what this board is going to vote on, Rick. I have no idea. I really don't. You know, we can turn down the money, we can put it in a pot, and it can go elsewhere. Whether Multnomah County homeless people will come into Clackamas County, probably. I'm not going to say it's not going to happen because they're transients. I don't know where the, like you say, they came from different states. Why wouldn't they come from Multnomah County? So it is a huge issue that's dropped in our laps, and this board and other jurisdictions, the cities are trying to deal with it as well. Now, Commissioner Fisher, yesterday we had a District 8 meeting, meaning District 8 is the three counties, Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington, came together and made a presentation in the room downstairs on how to deal with this situation, and many ideas were serviced. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Smith. There's a lot of opportunities to collaborate across the region to deal with our mental health and addiction crisis. We know there's been tremendous disinvestment for the last 30 years for people with mental health, as the mental hospitals have been closed, and the community supports did not materialize. And it's really created a storm in this time of post-COVID with the additional challenge of workforce is an incredible challenge of, even if you had all the money in the world to solve this problem, you don't have the workers who can intervene, provide the therapy, provide the substance use disorder treatment. And there's a lot of ideas going around to try to address that as best as possible. But one thing that I really appreciate you coming, Rick, today, because I have been really hounding the message, and along with my fellow commissioners, that it's not about how many people are housed with these services dollars, but the measure that we need to look at is how are we reducing homelessness? We need that measure, and I'm just so proud of Clackamas County. There is an effort called Built for Zero, where it will really look at who people are that are unsheltered and where they come from. First of all, I think you bringing that up, are they coming from other places? What are they doing? What their challenges are, and once they receive shelter, then does it work? And do they stay in shelter? And what are the outcomes that we're working on? Clackamas County has been part of this process to get this data. We were farther ahead, I believe, than the other two counties in talking to my colleagues, and that will be very important because this is a very challenging problem. But my interest is in not just churning out people getting into, you know, enabling the, "Okay, we're just going to give you all this," but to really look at our interventions working. And there's been a lot of study about what's best practice and what works and what doesn't work. I know that when, you know, I bring the lens of the developmental disability system to this. When my daughter, she's 37, when she was a very young child, the Fairview Institution was just closed for children, and the system went through over the last 30 years. I mean, it's been a lot, but it was actually closing down that institution and building a community system of support. We didn't do that for people with mental health challenges in this state. We don't have an adequate system that meets the need. And it's, there are serious issues coming down. If you read the Oregonian, the Mossman decision, which is putting time limits on at the Oregon State Hospital, how long people who are there for aid and assist and are going to be sent back to our communities. We don't have the community infrastructure of these secure placement settings for people to go to, and we are working as hard as we can to address that issue, but it's going to be incredibly challenging. So I know I probably talked more than I needed to, but I just think that community engagement's so critical. I want to hear what your neighbors are thinking. I want to hear what the ideas are. Because honestly, we in Clackamas County, and I know this is universal, we care about our neighbors. We care about our sheltered neighbors. We care about our unsheltered neighbors, and figuring out how we're going to come together as a community to address it is a huge opportunity that I know this board, because we've talked about it, is eager to embrace.
Thank you. Community involvement is the biggest pain. We had an incident in our neighborhood that me, myself, and I go around, and because of me, and I'm not patting myself on the back here, but we got rid of the problem. You've got to have a huge backhoe to unbury people's heads out of the sand to get them to do anything.
Yeah, I know.
And, but I've got enough people going right now that they ain't seen nothing yet. Now, going back to services and stuff like that, in my opinion, and based on, because I do, I'm a news junkie, and I do a lot of research because that's just the way my head operates, but I think we need to spend that money on services first. Now, as far as the housing part of it goes, you know, do you actually know how many people are going to say, "Yes, I'll take the housing, and I will live within the restrictions of that"? You know, it's already been brought up. But I guarantee you, it is not going to be that many people to spend that kind of money. And I don't know. I'm just, I know I got to quit here.
I want to leave you with one thought, though, also. Homelessness is very expensive. It's expensive on our law enforcement system. It's expensive on our health system, and studies show that homelessness is more expensive on all of us collectively and the human cost for the person that's unsheltered than it is to provide the housing and services to keep that person stably housed. And that's something that we might not recognize, but offline, if you're interested in getting copies of these studies and looking at them, I'm happy to share them with you.
Well, the imposition that is putting taxpayers and neighborhoods in because of not being able to solve the problem, it's, to me, it's just as simple as can be, and that is enforce the rule of law, and it's not happening. And I went to a Metro meeting and listened to all the wonderful things about this stuff, and there were five homeless people there that said, "We're not going to a shelter." And they happened to have their tents parked where my car was over there by the convention center. I'm the last one to speak. By then, everybody was gone, including yourself, and it was, it was very discouraging because they're not enforcing the law. I'll let it go with that, guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Like I say, send the opinions in. Jeff, from a legal perspective, this gentleman says we need to enforce the rule of law. Wasn't there a federal court decision that addressed trespassing?
Well, there is the Boise case.
The Boise case. I want you to listen to the Boise case, and our attorney is going to explain that to you. And you want to know what something is frustrating. You listen to this.
Yeah, basically, in that case, you had a situation where the city of Boise's anti-camping ordinance and so on was being enforced to, the Supreme Court found that enforcing that was essentially criminalizing somebody's status when you had nowhere to go, like a shelter. And so when shelter was an option, said you could, they had to go there, but without a shelter, you cannot criminalize somebody's behavior when they had nowhere else to, you know, sleep or to try to stay warm and dry. And so it's also been codified in a recent Oregon statute that will be going into effect next summer, and so it's affecting all of the municipalities and organizations that are trying to address this problem. How do you, you know, regulate behavior but not status? Is there really the distinction?
What that says is if a police, and we have police that go out, and they will take a look at a homeless situation, and they may want to arrest them because they're trespassing or they're homeless, they can't legally do that unless the county or the jurisdiction, city or county, has a treatment facility for them. So it's a free pass. So, Rick, what we're trying to do is provide facilities, not just hotels, but we have other ideas of what to do too, within the confines of the law. And that's, sometimes our hands are tied every time we turn around and try to do something. But that's information I'm putting out there, and if there's a way that we can get around it and solve this problem, you know, we're open-minded. Thank you very much. We have a couple more people. No, they're going to know more. Rick, they're going to know more. This is not a done deal. We are asking questions. This is not a done deal. More, correct, Ari?
That is correct, yes.
More information is coming out. It is not a done deal. So, you know, sometimes I told my daughter when she was little growing up, she'd be in a situation, she would go to fear. I says, "Honey, you just jumped into the dark cave without even listening to what this was about. You went to your dark place right away instead of listening to mama and daddy explaining what was going on." The situation with these neighbors, they have jumped to the dark place without getting adequate information. And when our staff went out and started door knocking and putting out information, it was our first attempt to let them know what was going on. Thank you very much. We have a couple more cards, and I suspect some people online. We have two people with the same last names living at the same address, so why don't you come up together? We have Suzanne and Chris Quarter. Is that, am I pronouncing that right? Please state. And just state your area of residence, and you each have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm Suzanne Quarter. I live out on Dodge Park Boulevard, almost to the Sandy River at the far, whichever direction in Clackamas County that is. And I'm here today representing the Cottrell Community Planning Organization. And our CPO is extremely concerned about the Portland Water Bureau's desire to put a plant up right on the boundary of Clackamas County and Multnomah County, which was a poor spot anyway, because it will influence what happens in Clackamas County a lot. There's no way you can put this billion-dollar project right there and not have it have impacts on Clackamas County. So that's what we're really talking about. We live in a rural area with lots of nurseries and nurserymen, trucks on the roads, very concerned about safety. They're going to use approximately almost 100 acres of ag land, which we know the Oregon State Goal III values our ag land very much. And right next to it, the parcel that's almost as big in Clackamas County is going to be losing part of their land to whatever. It's going to influence what chemicals they can use and this and that because there's a water filtration plant there. So, anyway, very concerned about the ag land. Also, we've heard that Multnomah County has said their roads cannot sustain the traffic that they need, the number of large trucks that they need. We did an approximation. It's over 100 large, we're not talking, you know, family trucks. We're talking large trucks going to and from the site a day for five years. And in the beginning, in the first couple of years, it'll probably be at least 200 trucks a day going to and from the site. And we've heard that because Multnomah County said, "No, you can't go on these roads with that," that they're coming to Clackamas County and asking for an access road through that parcel of Clackamas County ag that I was talking about, that's right next to the project, from Bluff Road, right next to Oregon Trails Academy School. I mean, we're talking fence right next to it. So we're very concerned about the safety for the kids and the parents coming and going, picking kids up from that school. It's right at an intersection of, I think it's Prok... Anyway, it's right on Bluff, right by that. It's kind of an interesting four-way, and that's where they want to put the access road. And we would like Clackamas County to be very concerned about giving them permission to do that because it's a large project. And with the ag land, they're also doing a lot of their acquiring lands from personal nurseries and stuff to put their pipelines in, and it's going to take four years to put these pipelines in. And a good portion of them are in Clackamas County, not just leaving the project through Multnomah County. So safety is a huge concern for all of us out there. We know what it's like to slow down behind nurseryman trucks when they have a whole load of their trees and stuff. We just deal with it. Am I done?
Well, do you want to be done?
No, I need a couple more. Just real fast. I'll be fast. Anyway, but the truckers, these big truckers that are coming in, they're going to be paid by the trip, not by the hour. So they're not going to be going slow. They're going to want to get their trips in for the day. So that's a safety issue. We have been attending the Gresham Fire Board District 10 meetings that advises the fire district that we live in out there, that it is, would be the fire district with the station that would be responsible for that site that Multnomah wants to use. They have it manned with two firemen. So we have this huge project, plus the safety of everybody else that's normally around there, that lives there, their properties and stuff. And if there's those trucks on the road, they're very concerned. And so the fire board asked Portland Water Bureau to give them some traffic reports, and they haven't. Last meeting, they said, "Well, we delayed doing those because there was a cost issue and stuff." We're going, "You want to move forward, but safety is a huge issue out there. The cost to Clackamas County for what they're going to do to the roads is a huge issue." So, anyway, I won't keep any more time. I'll probably be back again, but I want, I really want you guys to take this all into consideration. It's not a little thing.
Thank you. I'm going to have staff try to respond to this. I don't think this is the first time we've heard of this issue. I don't know whether Clackamas County is going to give an access road or not. It's probably pending. But Chris, would you like to go ahead and say what you need to say, and then I'll have, we'll take a jab at trying to answer.
Thank you. I'm Chris Quarter. I'm a homeowner in Clackamas County. We didn't coordinate our talks here, so she's much more eloquent and articulate than I am. So, yeah, I'm also opposed to this 100-acre industrial site that the Portland Water Bureau is proposing. And there's a whole lot of reasons, but I think I'm just going to stick to two. The first one really is the safety one. It's kind of a scary thought of what will happen. It's not what might happen. It will happen if you put 100-plus trucks on those roads with the school. There's four schools involved. Maybe there's more. We know there's four that are right on those roads, two high schools, two elementary schools. There's no way that there isn't going to be an accident. You folks maybe see the people lining up to pick up their kids and so on. How those trucks are going to get around there, I don't know, but it's going to be pretty serious. And also, if you also think about, it's not just that they're right there. They're not starting right there. They're coming from other areas in Clackamas County that are going to be affected by all these trucks. Pretty frustrating. So the other area, though, that's interesting is the environment, Johnson Creek. the other area though, that, that's, uh, interesting is the environment, Johnson Creek. The headwaters to Johnson Creek are right there, any one of you, no offense attendant, but any one of you could throw a rock and hit from their site on that slope. I walk there every day. You can throw a rock and hit the headwaters to Johnson Creek. That flows right into the Willamette. It's gonna get polluted. There's nothing they can do to mitigate that. They can try whatever. They don't seem to be very concerned about it because they never talk about it. That's interesting. Uh, but it will get polluted, send the waters, uh, right into the Willamette. So this is a serious looming catastrophe. Uh, so are we kinda urging you to, in whatever way you can, to say no to this unnecessary, where it is, unnecessary government trophy project? That's plain and simple what it is. Thank you.
Um, you know, we have several issues in Clackamas County with the Portland Water Bureau. And, uh, you might want to hear about those or not. But Gary, you want to address this?
Yes. So the, and actually Commissioner Scholl has also been very involved with his project. It's, so the city of Portland makes the decision on the location of the site, unfortunately. But the access road, and I think to Mike Bezner, our Assistant Director of Transportation, who's been texting me, he's aware of the request. There's been no decisions made on this yet. We're gonna brief you, Board, before any staff work is done on this, the access road. Because if we don't approve it, then that will impact the site, won't it? But I know Commissioner Scholl has talked with the City of Portland Commissioners. That's something you can choose to do, Commissioners, if you want to up the advocacy with the City of Portland. But ultimately, it is the City of Portland City Council's decision on the sighting of the location. But the road is your decision, Commissioner. So no decisions, no action taken on that access road yet. We'll brief you before any further actions are taken on that.
We need to delve into this more deeply. And not every Commissioner will do the level of a deep dive on every single issue. This is really an issue that Commissioner Scholl has taken on. But on a side note, for a little history, uh, the Portland water supply in Multnomah County comes from the Bull Run Reservoir, which is in Clackamas County. They have been instructed and/or mandated or ordered by the federal government that they need to replace that facility. And that's why they're doing this, because it's aged. And they have postponed it and it got an extension and an extension and extension. What is at issue, immediate issue for this board is they take trucks weighing 12 tons across the Bull Run Bridge that is in Clackamas County owned by Clackamas County. And that bridge is going to fail. It ranks two on a scale of 100, of 100 being the most fit. So my staff, the all staff, we have applied for six different grants from the Department, Oregon Department of Transportation, from the federal transportation for bridge funds. And we have been turned down systematically every single time. We have since enlisted the help of, on a joint letter signed by myself, Multnomah County Chair Deb Kefory, and, uh, Water Bureau, uh, City Councilor Mapes, to encourage Congress to help fund this, to fix this. If we don't do that, uh, I'm, we may have, it's not my decision, we may have to weight limit that bridge. Because there's people live up there. We have to keep it open for the residents and any emergency situations that could arise from a forest fire, firefighting equipment needs to go up there. So this isn't the only issue. It is a very complicated, um, supplying water to probably 800, 900,000 people. And I don't have the answers for that, but I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention. Yes, Susan?
One more comment. And that is, um, the issue isn't whether or not they treat the Cryptosporidium microbe that they're talking about. That's what the EPA wants them to treat. We understand, there's other ways of treating it. The issue is they came out into a rural community and decided that was the place to do it. And that was, that's the real issue, is the location. Where no one's saying if they have to treat this, they can use UV or other things. The issue is where they want to put it. And, you know, they chose what was easy for them to access or, well, obviously.
Have they bought the land yet?
Pardon me?
Have they purchased the land yet?
The land has been owned, it was purchased for another reason, but it was owned by them for a long time. But it was purchased for something else. They say it was for the water filtration.
By the city of Portland.
But they don't have land use on it. Yet they're taking land from people to have easements for their, um, pipelines and stuff. It's just, we can't understand how when you don't, even if you own it, you don't have land use because it's ag land and they want to put an industrial plant there. Yet they're taking pieces from personal people. It's really, and they're getting permission, like I, like I said, you know, they're moving ahead, getting approval from the fire district to go ahead and, you know, apply for land use, but they haven't come up with the, the road safety study that they promised us. They're just, it's backwards. And all we're saying is the site is wrong for what's involved with this project. Thank you very much for your time today.
Commissioner Scholl, you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna speak to this, but I'll speak to it during Commissioner Comments.
Thank you.
If you don't mind.
Very good.
Is that later today?
Those are all the blue cards. Thank you. Thank you very much. He, he's gonna speak to it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Yes. Uh, Tony, do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to testify?
Madam Chair, at this time, I have Kay Rosback would like to speak. Ms. Rosback, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, ma'am.
Uh, good morning Commissioners and staff. My name is Kay Rosback. I live in Clackamas County. And I'm a patron of our county library and Jennings Lodge. I support our county commissioners to fully fund the Oak Lodge Gladstone One Library Two Branch Agreement for the 21st Century. My family has been using this small Jennings Lodge and, uh, for over 30 years. We were excited for the new library to be constructed, but we're very disappointed due to the delay in its construction. So I'm here today to say a little bit about that. My family has been using this library for so long. Uh, my husband and I were avid, are avid readers. We read to our son from his very beginning. And, um, our library has been our source of large number of books and on vast subjects. Our son still loves to read as an adult, and we credit this to his success in school and in life. I believe in the enjoyment of reading can be shared with children. And I've been a volunteer for several years with the Start Making a Reader Today program, the SMART program, by reading with children at Jennings Lodge Elementary. Uh, this is why I support the use of the ARPA phones to get the two library projects started so that a greater number of families of readers of all ages can be served. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tony, who else?
At this time, I do not have anyone else registered to speak. If you would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will close the public communication portion of this meeting and we will move on. Gary, what's up next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use my time to share good news about the work of our county staff and our programs. First, we received a nice note from a resident complimenting our Assessment and Taxation Department and our staff there. This person wrote, "I wanted to reach out to you to let you know that Betsy Harris was wonderful to deal with and so helpful. She gathered information from me during our initial phone call, then told me she would get back to me a little later in the day with answers and information. She called me back quickly and answered all of my questions without making me feel like I was bothering her. She also followed up with an email when I requested that. She was friendly, easy to communicate with, and she made me feel like my issue was valid and worthy of her time, all of which I really appreciated." So thank you to that kind note and thank you to Betsy and our Assessment and Taxation Office for her stellar customer service. Next, a, uh, excuse me, a constituent wrote, "I want to thank Clackamas County for spending funds to keep our roads in good order. When driving around Clackamas County, I'm not worried about poor road conditions. Your maintenance teams obviously work hard to keep the roads safe and clear of potholes. I just wanted to let you know that residents see your efforts of your team and we really appreciate your work." So that is, of course, thanks to you Commissioners for your support of our roads maintenance teams and our road maintenance team within our Department of Transportation and Development for their also outstanding customer service. That is my update today. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, up next is Commissioner Communication. And Sonia Fisher, you're on the list first.
Oh, thank you, Chair Smith. Boy, it has been a busy week this week, hasn't it? I'm sure that everybody is shaking their heads. Yes, yes, yes. Yesterday, I had the honor and privilege of waking up at 5:30 in the morning so that I could participate in the White House Hunger Conference that started at 8:30 in the morning on the East Coast. But fortunately, they were a little bit delayed, so I was able to, um, have my breakfast and get situated. But the White House Hunger Conference was, um, 50 years ago, under President Richard Nixon, there was the first hunger conference that led to free Mardou school lunches, SNAP benefits, WIC program. It really changed fundamentally the government's involvement with hunger in our country. So this conference was really interesting and I have, and I was able to listen to the, um, overall speakers, listen to the President give his agenda and also members of Congress talk about what's, what's coming ahead. But the thing that really impressed me that I'm super excited about, so the first hunger conference, which this conference, 50 years ago, did a lot of connecting with local communities to come up with ideas. And one thing that I didn't know is that the farmers markets that we currently have was instigated and developed from that hunger conference back 50 years ago. And as we all know, we kind of take our farmers markets for granted now. We go, oh, let's go to the farmer's market. We're going to, to do this. And for us, with our goal of increasing local food production, that's one of our strategic priorities, this effort of making sure there is locally grown food that people have access to and really looking at heart disease and diabetes are preventable, diseases that are very much related to diet, that really honing in on this and developing strategies, it's, um, there's a lot of opportunity there. So I'm looking forward to engaging more deeply on this as being also in leadership at the, um, Association of Oregon Counties Human Serv-, Health and Human Services Committee, you know, connecting with my Commissioners across the state for ideas. And it was just an honor to be asked. This was an opportunity that arises from me, my chairing the National Association of Counties Human Services and Education Committee. Our past chair was in the room in Washington DC, as was our staff person. So we were texting back and forth what was happening. Um, I did not make it to be there in person because we had a land use hearing that fortunately, our Chair Smith, you'll never believe this, the land use hearing yesterday happened during one of the breaks of the White House Hunger Conference. And then, of course, we all know that, uh, we had District Eight hosted here and I chaired that. So I did miss the closing comments, but having the time change was helpful in that the conference ended in the afternoon back in Washington DC and I was able to participate with most of it. So, action items to come. I will keep our Board informed. And I think we are ahead of the game with our interest in our local interests of increasing food production locally. That is pretty awesome. So I'm looking forward to sharing that with the opportunities with my colleagues nationally.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. And thank you for those of you who've joined us today to make public testimony. It's very much appreciated. On the November general election, I'd like to remind people that 18th of October is the last day to register to vote. Please check the Clackamas County website, clackamas.us, how to vote for information. And that has a link to the Secretary of State website where you can check your registration, your party affiliation, and your address. Make sure it's correct before 18th of October. We need 100% turnout in November, 100% responsibility. Your vote will make a difference. Why is it important? Well, Oregon's third highest cost of housing in the, in the nation. We have one of the highest taxation rates in the nation. And we heard from some folks today about tolling. My question to you is this. If tolling is implemented, will that put you as a taxpayer in the top of 50 states for the highest tax people in America? It could very well happen. I have not conceded to the idea that tolling is gonna come. I will continue to fight it. Uh, some of our neighbors have conceded to the idea that it's gonna happen. I don't believe that is the case. And let's not give up the fight. On short-term rentals, Commissioner Savis and I met on Monday with some folks from the STR community. We talked about ideas on how those might be, uh, administered in an efficient way, uh, an efficient way to limit the burden on the STR owner and on the county government. So be patient a little bit longer. I'm convinced we'll come up with something, uh, effective on administering STRs. On inflation and construction, uh, this morning I read that the Lake Oswego Water Treatment Plant Project, they just found out that it jumped from 140 million last year to 180 million this year. And that's what we've been seeing in construction projects. Uh, we're looking at a 8.3% inflation over the last 12 months that ended in August. Uh, we saw here last week, the biggest jump in the interest rate in, I think, 35 years, which was a three-fourths of a percent in one day. So I mentioned this to you, to be, ask you to be patient when it comes to some of these construction projects we're working on. The staff has been working, uh, already to look at the next year's county budget to trim it, to accommodate for an expensive courthouse. So we're doing what we can, uh, in this environment of high cost. Um, last night, we had the Metro Policy Advisory Committee meeting. Today's the Association of Oregon and California Counties meeting. And I'm gonna brief the Board on the outcomes of those meetings on Tuesday morning. On the dormant property, uh, thank you, Chief Klein and ladies for coming up and talking to us about that from the Hoodland area this morning. I look forward to that discussion coming up in the near future with the Board. And, uh, I'm encouraged by your enthusiasm for the idea of a new firehouse and a, that's sensitive to community needs also. And I've been up there, uh, several times for the annual Hoodland Fire District, uh, award ceremony. I can tell you that there's no fire district that I know of that is doing so much in terms of supporting the safety of the people on the mountain from search and rescue to fires to traffic accidents. My hat's off to everybody from the Hoodland Fire District. Thank you for your work. On the, um, issue of supportive housing, I'd like to comment on the Econ Lodge, uh, agenda item we heard about today. 779,000 bucks for nine months. That's for 27 rooms, maximum 270 nights. That comes out to about $106 a night. It's one of the tools we have for, uh, providing a safety off the street, uh, uh, housing for people in need. It's, uh, only one of many efforts the county's working on now to provide safety off the street. Uh, we were briefed here just this last week on the status of requests for information on five different types of safety off the street projects that, uh, I'm encouraged to see the enthusiasm from our partners in the, in the county and in the region for developing some of these projects. The fact is that some of them are difficult. They take time. And an easy go-to has been the use of these hotels. Now, um, Rick commented today about his concern about the idea to purchase a hotel. Um, I want everybody to be sure they realize that. What we've committed to at this point in time is What we've committed to at this point in time is, we've coordinated with the state to do due diligence, a study of the feasibility of a hotel, the one there at 82nd and 212. We realized that the Comfort Suites across the freeway there is in a neighborhood. Rick, I understand your concern about that. It's important to note that last year, we looked at 12 motels throughout the county. Many of them were, would have been a maintenance nightmare. They, we scratched them off the list. Some of them came with big blowback from the cities they're in. So, the due diligence look will come back with a picture of the feasibility of the hotel at 82nd and 212, and we'll look at that. But at this, at this juncture, again, there's no, there's no decision made to actually purchase one. We'll see how that goes. When it comes to homeless action to alleviate people who are suffering, I want to make sure that people realize that the county has got nowhere to go, except to act. We do not dictate the drugs that come into our county. We cannot control our international borders. We cannot control 5 million new people coming across the border in the last 18 months that have an impact on our housing and on some of our low-level jobs that force some people out of work. This is a huge fact that, when it comes to my first comment about the general election and the responsibility of every citizen to vote, your vote is going to affect the action of the federal government on dealing with some of these problems that percolate right down to the county, where we have nowhere to go but to act. We have to do something about the homeless problem. We have to react to the killer drugs that are coming in here. Your vote also will hopefully elect people who will do something about turning over Measure 110, which most, every law enforcement and every emergency response person has told me that Measure 110 has been a blight on this state. So, again, the county's working on these five different types of safety off the streets. Once we have the ability to provide safe housing for people who are living in the rough, then our police and our Sheriff Department will have the ability to arrest for vagrancy. You heard this morning about the Boise case and the new Oregon statute that will prohibit us from arresting anybody without having, first, the option to put them in a safe housing. On the Portland Water Bureau plant, I grew up right there at the headwaters of Johnson Creek, there on Cottrell Road. My mom and dad had that house with a lake there. I could hit a golf ball to the new plant. I have talked to Portland about this problem. The history goes back a ways. The people in the vicinity of Portland, Powell and 160th, didn't want that plant there. It got a lot of public blowback then, and the idea to move it out to Carpenter Lane, adjacent to Dodge Park Boulevard, seemed easy, because there wasn't much blowback there. But it is in exclusive farm use land. There's been no approval from the land use folks in Salem to change that use. The idea to build a road from the plant across the county line onto Bluff Road, next to the Oregon Trail School, I can tell you, if I have anything to say about that, that won't happen. I'll certainly vote against it if that comes up, because Bluff Road and the roads coming off of Highway 26 towards the plant, none of them are conducive to the kind of traffic that we're looking at. Finally, on this issue, I want to say that, at my home, three miles north of Sandy, right off Bluff Road, I'm up on the bluff there, right across the river from Ladderet Park. The water I have comes off the Bull Run, it comes off the Portland Water Pipe. We've got a 10-inch pipe going from that to Sandy, and a 6-inch pipe coming down to my neighborhood. It's the best water in the world. I don't see a need to spend $1 billion in taxpayer money to build a huge plant that will require a huge amount of chemicals to process. I don't have a good feeling about the power of this board to actually fight that project. It's a Portland and a Montloma County issue, but we can fight it when it comes to any reduction of safety on roads in Clackamas County. And if there's something I can do personally as a member of this board to do more to help fight this, I certainly will spend my time to do so. I think that is it, but I'd like to end on a bit of humor. Things here in the county, it gets kind of serious sometimes. I am back in a war zone. This time, the war is against the box elder bugs and agent stink bugs. If you in your sector are winning the battle, please share your tactics with me, because right now, I've lost the 3-1 superiority. In fact, I am, it's a million to one, I'm outgunned a million to one. I'm losing the battle against the box elder bugs. Now, I see some smiles, and that's what I was trying to do today, but I'm serious. The box elder bugs are driving me crazy. They drive me buggy. Thank you, Clackamas County, for your time.
You're not alone.
Oh, Commissioner Shaw, I have the stink bugs in my house on the farm. Oh, my gosh.
Yes, oh, yes, it's terrible.
This is the whole Northwest, we can-
Do you mean to tell me, fellow Commissioners, that's what's been driving you crazy?
Yes, absolutely. And those stink bugs stink. So, if you get them on your hands, make sure you wash right away, you don't want to touch your eye, because it'll sting. Yes, yes, that's a bad one. Piggybacking on what Commissioner Fisher was talking about, farmers' markets, I attended the N-Rac Harvest Dinner, it's a North Willamette Research Education, excuse me, Extension Center located just out of Wilsonville, and it's the largest Extension Center research facility in the entire state of Oregon. And I'm also proud to say Clackamas County has the largest extension service, and it promotes agriculture, researching new crops, new ways of doing things, and it was attended by 180 people. One of the largest dinners that they've had. It was a lot of fun, I met a lot of people from different jurisdictions. I had dinner at the table with Commissioner Craig Pope from Polk County and his wife. We have similar issues, and it's always good to get together in opportunities like that. And it was, we met, I met the new, brand-new, only two weeks, Oregon State University President from UCLA Los Angeles, she's an engineer. I also met the Head Dean of the Agriculture Department and all the agriculture people, which, I'm a fourth-generation farmer, and this means a lot to me, to be able to help those folks along. This morning, in Commissioner Savis's absence, I attended the J-PAC meeting, and that's the Joint Transportation Group that meets once a month on the tri-counties area, and we reviewed the RTP, another acronym, the Regional Transportation Plan. And there are certain areas in Clackamas County, arterios, they call them urban arterios, that have been identified, I was told today by the federal government, because of safety concerns, there's too many accidents and/or deaths on that. And they are applying a lens that I challenged, which I did not think was appropriate for Clackamas County, because every jurisdiction looks different. Clackamas County looks different than Montloma County. Clackamas County looks different than Washington County, so I pushed to look through the lens of Clackamas County on that. And it's very obvious, this is hosted by Metro. It's very obvious to me after I left the meeting, that the intent of Metro is, they kept questioning us, "How are we going to pay for this? How are we going to pay for this? Well, they're going to tax us again. They're going to run another tax to pay for our roads that they have selected, not we have selected." And he says, "You're kidding me, Clackamas County's not going to vote for another tax? You've got an issue of toll that you won't pay attention to our tolling. We have said time and time again that we oppose tolling." And this was Shirley Craddock, Metro Counselor. Shirley, you're not ODOT, but Metro has not helped us one bit in opposing tolling on all three lanes. You have not helped us one bit on telling ODOT not to toll I-205 before the other jurisdictions in the tri-county areas, and you think for one minute you're going to bring a tax to Clackamas County? I don't think so. Seeing no further business before this board, we are adjourned.